Good evening, and welcome to the Village of Westmont Combined Committee, the whole meeting and Village Board meeting, voting Village Board meeting. I'd like to begin by asking our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebanow is absent tonight. Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Village Planner and Assistant Economic Development Director Malik.
Deputy Police Chief Brenzo.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item, minutes of the September 1st, 2001 Committee, the whole meeting, and the September 6th, 2011 Board meeting.
Motion to accept, Seneca?
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Okay. Open forum, we have three requests before us this evening, under open forum, and the first one is from our Fire Chief Frank Trout. I would like to speak on behalf of the Lutheran Church.
Yes, sir. It's about our 10th year now. We've had a tailgate party, which is a combined street party and church party, and we'd like to invite members of the Board and neighbors to our event. This coming will be Sunday, October the 2nd. Starts about 11:00 a.m. in the morning, and goes until late afternoon. We'd like to have the streets, would be Grand Street barricaded between the intersection of Irving and the alley before Burlington Street.
Did you fill out a block party thing yet?
I filled it out in open forum requests.
Would you stop in my office tomorrow?
I think I did that last year. Didn't I make that same mistake?
That's fine, reminding you to stop in tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Larry Forsberg, the head of our Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, and thank you. It's a very busy week at the Chamber this week. We have two very important events coming up. The first one is our open house this Thursday, September 22nd, and we want to give a yell out to all the businesses in the community to come on out. It's Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. over at Westmont Center, 1 South Cast. And when I say business community, it also includes home-based businesses. So we want to have everybody come out and get a chance to learn what's going on in the business community here, and become a part of the Chamber. Secondly, and just as important, Friday night, we have a Westmont Oktoberfest celebration. It's going to be held over at the Knights of Columbus Hall at 15 North Cass Avenue.
Twenty-five.
We're going to start at 6:00 p.m.
Twenty-five North.
Thank you. Twenty-five North Cass Avenue. I guess I should add notes. Twenty-five North Cass Avenue, starting at 6:00 p.m. going to 10:00 p.m., we're going to have the Too Loud Polka Band. We're going to have an Oktoberfest meal supplied by Uncle Bubbs, and we're going to have a lot of fun that evening. So we want to invite everybody to come out. We do have limited tickets still available, and just give me a call at the Chamber at (630) 960-5553. Thank you. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Larry. And the next is James Kraus from 405 South Oak Avenue.
My topic is not as exciting. Hello, I'm Jim Kraus, and I've been here before. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. When I was here on July 13th, you approved a deck permit for me, and I'm very delighted. I'd like to humbly ask your consideration to do it about 50/50, where I could have half patio and half deck. My concerns are very legitimate as far as grade and the height of three different doors. I provided some pictures to the Village Manager shortly after the meeting, and I can pass those around for you to look at. What it amounts to is very closest to the house, or the back garage door, six inches below this door here, which is about 10 inches higher than this door here.
He's going to speak. He's going to speak. Sit down here. It's amazing.
John, isn't this more appropriate? Doesn't it have to go on the agenda and not in open forum?
Thank you very much.
Asking for variance request?
No, he was instructed, if he wanted the Board to look at this again, that it's too late to have it reconsidered, but that he could have an amendment, basically a new ordinance passed, which would effectively repeal the old ordinance and grant new relief. But to understand what he's asking for in the first place, that he should appear at open forum and present what his request is, and we can decide, does he have to go back through the variance process, or is it simply same lot coverage? You know, I think it's, let's hear what he has to say, and then decide.
Thank you very much. But this is the back door area by the access to the garage. You can see the standing water there, and it's slightly below grade, the remainder of my backyard, which drains off into the rear. The patio is about eight inches higher, and I would have one step there. And what it amounts to is if I put a deck there, that would be very compromised as far as putting a wooden deck in that area. I'm excited about, and I have a permit for my deck section, which I've already applied for and started on, which is this area right here. And that's the height of the remainder of the house, and there'd be two steps there, seven and a half inches, that go to approximately the top of this stick here. And this would all be deck. So I respectfully ask your consideration to perhaps consider this again. I appreciate your time. Nothing else has changed, and it's a great issue. I have extra sets of photos for everybody, if you'd like them.
Was the original request that went before planning and zoning for 100% patio?
Yes, sir.
So the lot, the amount of the lot coverage that was published for was 100% impermeable surface. It was at the Board's then direction to convert it to a deck, which was less lot coverage, but at least from the public hearing standpoint, it went through the process. The neighbors were aware that he was looking for 100% patio. So you have the right to send it back to planning and zoning. You have the right to not do so because it's no expansion of the area or change in lot coverage, and not reconsider, but consider a new ordinance which repeals the original one. Or you can say, we've considered this, we voted on it, thank you, but no thank you.
The patio.
How big is this area we're looking at?
It is exactly 232 square feet.
No, the part in front of the... That part there?
Yes, sir.
That's 232 square feet?
To the area that would shut off from here, from here over, is the 232 square feet.
And that would be the patio section?
Yes, ma'am.
And would that be permeable pavers?
I would have pavers.
Non-permeable. So it looks like you want to pour concrete patio, or do a paver patio, where you have standing water? Where would that water divert to?
The water would divert directly to my backyard.
What's the percentage of lot coverage? I don't remember what it was where we turned it down for it all to be impermeable patio.
I think it's 52.5%.
Shannon, can you help me? You probably remember that.
It was approximately 53%.
Okay. And what's the lot coverage if you do it the way you want it now? What's the percentage?
Adding that 232 square feet, about.
Half a point, maybe?
It would make a nominal difference in the total percentage. I don't know the number offhand.
Well, I'm of the opinion that we talked about this in great depth, and things were poured over more lot coverage than what was originally allowed, and I'm not in favor of granting any more non-permeable surfaces. I am still in favor of building a deck on the whole thing, just because the lot coverage is so high.
How do you compensate for the going into the garage and into the...
You do different level decks.
You'd have to put a step on the deck, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. There'd be a step from the deck serve, from the top level to the bottom level. And the difference in grade here, that's my own architectural drafting there. But that's the six-foot patio door, that's 24 inches above grade. This next door here is 12 inches above grade, and this one here is four inches above grade.
You can't see the bottom part.
Slide it up on this.
There you go.
And those are the bushes that would go in there to be away from the lot line.
I think it's a reasonable request, given all of those different elevations of the I'd like to see, you know, pavers that would allow the water to go, to run through as opposed to off, but...
Using permeable pavers. I mean, I, when those exist, what is the reason to grant more non-permeable surface when those at least exist that are permeable? For all of the people that were turning away, and turning down, and aren't even bothering to come in front of us since we lowered the lot coverage, to go back on what we already said was too much lot coverage, and a more, and add more impermeable space, I'm against it. So if it's going to be paved at all, it's got to be permeable.
I'll go along with that.
I think it's a very reasonable request, especially given that this is a lot coverage that you inherited. You didn't cause this, you inherited it, and part of it was due to our fault. I mean, our inspector went out there and missed that that driveway was too wide. Shame on us. I don't think you should be punished for that. But I would still like to see a paver that would allow the water to run through the, you know, if we could reach that kind of an agreement, I'd say have at it, go for it. I think it makes perfect sense.
May I ask this, though? If it is 15 six wide, and there's probably 40 feet to the back of my yard, that would just run right off to my backyard.
Let's see, looking at it, is working with the village on a problem?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with permeable pavers, that's why I'm asking. Are they like sponge, or what are they? I'll have to investigate that.
Shannon?
Shannon?
Well, for the record...
Just don't make it grow past 53, okay?
For the record, permeable pavers are not entirely permeable. They're like a unilock brick.
Okay.
That allows for some water to seep through to the grade below. So that would be the material that the Board members are suggesting.
And that would look nice, too.
I love your suggestion.
The cost would be about double.
Pardon me?
Cost would be about double.
It is more costly.
Than a regular, than regular paver stuff.
You're talking about the unilock?
Yeah.
I think they have a permeable product, right?
Okay.
And they are attractive. I mean, it looks nice.
Nice.
Looks really nice.
And staff had the same concern trustee Emory raised, with the pictures show water pooling in the existing conditions. So that was something that the original plans for the house, when it was first in for permit, did show a deck, and when we saw that water pooling, the same thought came to our mind as well.
But that property's dropped down, too, in front of that. That's all going to be raised up in front of that doorstep.
Correct.
It'll be leveled.
Yes.
Which will make a difference.
The grade change is not substantial, though. What is the differential?
From the back patio door to grade is 24 inches. From the side patio door is 12 inches, plus there'll be one step. And then the grade from the back garage door is about four inches. That's why I have the issue.
So it would be terrorist in either of them?
Yeah.
Hi, I just, I, we went through this in great detail, sir. I understand the situation of what happened, and I understand everything that goes along with it, but you spent a lot of time and effort in dealing with this and going through it, and your original plans had a deck.
Mm-hmm.
And that was one of the points that was made that night. I can honestly say, you know, I'm sorry for the situation or whatever, but I can't, I just can't in good conscience have a property covering 52% of the lot. Not after everything that we've gone through in this village.
Again, if, you know, if you can do a permeable, I'm, I think that's a nice compromise for the situation that you inherited.
Well, I guess, I guess here's the question, since it's an open forum request, it's not on the agenda, there can't be a vote tonight.
Right.
I guess at this point, the question is, do you want to put it on a future agenda and consider it?
It's fine.
I would like to. I don't have a problem with a permeable brick either. You've gone from a house that was literally and completely a junkyard.
Mm-hmm.
To a beautiful home, and this is the last, the last step in completing.
Correct.
Project. Is that correct?
That is correct. If I would have had the money two and a half years ago to finish, I would have done it then, and I wouldn't be here. I started this process in March.
Like the attorney said, we can approve it tonight, but we can put it on as an agenda item.
Thank you very much.
Next meeting, and that's about as fast as we can go.
I very much appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last item under open forum. Next report, Mayor. The first thing I would like to do is just make a few comments about the wonderful 911 ceremony this year that was conducted and set up by our Fire Department, Police Department, and many, many other volunteers. For those of you that were in attendance, it was truly a wonderful program honoring those that had lost their lives in the 911 tragedy. And what made it most interesting for me was the fact that they had a survivor speak to us that day, who was actually on the 61st floor of one of the buildings when the first plane struck. And he told us every step that he took, and what the procedure was for him, and how he made that decision initially. And if he had delayed, he would not be alive today. So it was indeed a wonderful story on his part, which gave us a feeling of what so many people suffered through trying to escape from the building, and some of which did, and obviously, a lot of them didn't. But anyhow, I just want to thank everyone that was involved. I should mention also that Frank Trout, our Fire Chief, has insisted that we continue to have the 911 ceremony every year, which we've done. And to his recollection, Naperville is the only other town that continues to do this on a yearly basis. But there were a lot of celebrations this time, because it was the 10th anniversary. So, thank you. And next, we have a, this is the Constitution Week proclamation, which I would like to read. And we have a representative here from the DAR in Downers Grove, and I don't know whether you wanted to make any comments. You're more than welcome to make a few brief comments to the Board if you would like. And then I'll read the proclamation.
I just wanted to say that, as I'm sure you're all aware, our Constitution has been under some attack lately, and we are most appreciative of your support and the support of the Board in calling attention to the fact that this is such an important document to our whole livelihood and to our nation, and we appreciate your consideration.
Okay. And would you give us your name and address, please?
Martha Miller. And I live in here in Westmont.
Live here in Westmont. Very good. Thank you very much. Allow me to now read the proclamation. A proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2011 as Constitution Week, whereas September 17th, 2011 marks the 224th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, William Ron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Village of Westmont, along with the Westmont Village Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week. And we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed through us, through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And thank you very much for taking the time to come over here this evening. And we have a signed copy of the proclamation that we would like you to take with you.
Don't we have to vote on it first?
If we, do we have to?
Well, it's not on the agenda for a vote tonight.
Okay.
We typically have... This is on the agenda. Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it is? Okay. Yeah. It's under report, so I wasn't sure that it was a voting item. Yeah, we can have a motion to approve then.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Put the official documentation on.
I wanted to put the official vote on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we'll see if our clerk, once she gets settled, has anything to give us this evening.
I just can't remind the Board and all our residents that this Thursday is our trustee, ex-trustee Forsley, and trustee Emory's birthday. So, September 22nd, so happy birthday to both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all you have?
That's all I have tonight.
Next, our Village Attorney, John Zemanek.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of Constitution Week, I've been doing some research into loitering ordinances in conjunction with some of the other topics for discussion tonight. One of the comments that was brought up at a prior meeting was, what can we do about loitering? People walking down the middle of the street, people idly hanging around. You may, no, may not know, but loitering statutes or ordinances in general have been stricken down as unconstitutional. They're typically overbroad. They seek to regulate otherwise lawful conduct. The courts have held in tightening up loitering ordinances that they are valid and constitutional if they prohibit some overt unlawful act.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Such as engaging in drug-related activity. Additionally, if someone is loitering to the extent where they're interfering with pedestrians or traffic, such a loitering ordinance may be upheld as constitutional. Simply having an ordinance on the books that prohibits the gathering of people in a spot is unconstitutional. I checked, when looking into this subject, we have a loitering ordinance on the books. As written, if enforced, it's unconstitutional. I don't think our Police Department ever enforces that. That being said, it's remained on the books. At the very least, we should get rid of that ordinance. If you want to delve into this further, I can provide you some more detailed examples of what's involved, but you basically have to show intent and some overt act in furtherance of that intent to commit a criminal act, such as drug dealing. If that happens, chances are you're going to arrest the person for drug dealing.
Yeah, not loitering.
Ah, so you're kind of spinning your wheels.
So, John, even on private property, the parking lot of a business?
That's trespassing.
Oh, okay. Okay.
This is in a public place, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, parks. You have gangs of kids, people, whatever. You can't prohibit them from gathering. You, and let's say gangs were an issue, and you know there are certain markings of certain gangs. You can't have a loitering statute against gang activities on its face, or wearing gang colors, or anything like that. Those are all stricken down as unconstitutional. It has to be very specific, and as, even with those ordinances, there has to be the police walking up to the individual, saying, "It appears that you're loitering with an intent to commit a crime and about to, or committing unlawful conduct. You have to disperse." And then you have to have like a three-hour window, where you're not allowed to come back and hang out here. And only then, if they violate it, can you make an arrest. So I think it's more trouble than it's worth. I think if there's unlawful conduct, arrest them for the unlawful conduct without worrying about loitering. It may be worth it if you feel there are a problem with people walking down the street obstructing traffic, or standing in a sidewalk and obstructing pedestrians, and they're asked to disperse, and they don't, then you can arrest them.
Yeah, because that's $125 fine, standing in the street and obstructing traffic.
Right.
The chief let me know right away what that fine was.
So we have, I haven't looked yet, do we have something on the books about obstructing traffic?
It would be, officers have an issue, it would be under the obstructing pedestrian and roadway obstructing traffic. It's a Illinois vehicle code violation, as if you were same as speeding. You would have to post a bond. Usually if it's pedestrian, they usually don't have a driver's license with them, so they would be released on their own recognizance right there at the scene. So it would be a traffic ticket that we could issue.
Given that the unlawful conduct's already regulated, I will take your direction. I don't believe it's necessary, but if you'd like another tool for enforcement for your law officers, then we can proceed.
No, we don't enforce loitering, and I think you've got better, you've got a lot more ordinances to work on.
Yes. Okay. With that being said, then, I would like to get the loitering ordinance off the books. It's just a housecleaning matter, so it's probably the next agenda. Take care of that.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Village Manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. The first thing I had was, on the agenda indicated a ComEd resolution. As you know, at the last set of meetings, we had representatives here from ComEd that made a presentation and comment, made comments regarding the storm and damage we had over the summer. Trustees Scott and trustee Nero had asked us to look at what a couple of other communities were doing. They were putting together a letter originally to send to the Governor regarding this Senate Bill 1652. We had, we got in touch with the Village of Downers Grove. They actually changed from the idea of sending a letter to the Governor to passing a resolution, which they passed at their last meeting. I did get a copy of that last week, and what I passed out is a modified version of that, because one thing that has changed since this was given to us from Downers Grove is the Governor did veto Illinois Senate 1652. I don't know that this is something we absolutely need to pass tonight, but I'd be happy to go ahead and read this, if you'd like, and go over the comments in here, or we could schedule for the next agenda.
The only question that I have is down in the end of the body. While the Village of Westmont, as opposed to Illinois Senate Bill 1652 in its current form, we urge the Governor and the General Assembly to work towards a, I believe the word should be compromise.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Solution that protects the consumer but also encourages greater power reliability in the ComEd service area for a longer-term economic benefit of all of us.
Yeah, the basic premise of the original resolution of Downers Grove was oppose the bill as it stands because it didn't have enough accountability standards written in there for reliability, and there was also concern about the cost. And what I'm trying to suggest in this is, and I think we kind of got that sense from the discussion we had with ComEd, is there is a need for reinvestment in our electric infrastructure. And I think if we look at the long-term, just the competitive ramifications with other states that are already putting changes in place in how they regulate their electricity, and they're also encouraging, you know, their utilities to put in some of these technological upgrades, I still think that that's something that we ought to look at, but it's got to be done in a way that we know that the consumers are getting what they're paying for. And that was the point we were trying to make with it.
And there really needs to be a piece in there that this smart grid has to be proactive and not reactive, because they clearly stated it's not proactive. It's to fix it as it happens, and I'm sorry, I just don't think taxpayers should be paying for that that way.
Part of the problem in this state right now is the way the regulatory system is set up is ComEd is always in arrears trying to recover the money that they're investing. And there has been some discussion about trying to look at some other states that have different regulatory models. I know one, for example, was the state of New Mexico. But that was the primary reason in Senate Bill 1652 that they had the idea, what people were calling the automatic rate increases. It wasn't automatic in the sense that there wasn't going to be a hearing. There was, but it was going to be after the fact originally, and then that was changed. But that was one way that they were trying to address that retroactive recovering cost situation.
Yeah, I don't think we have to vote on it tonight, but I think it should be on an agenda.
Okay. So, put on the 29th. Okay, then, the other thing I had was to ask Chief Mulhern to come to the podium. He had a couple of items he wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. It's a little bit of sadness, a lot of sadness here that we had a tragedy in our family last week. Our former K-9 Dex, who retired from our service in 2009, had been battling cancer for the last year. And just last Thursday, I learned that Tom Kozelski, his handler, had to put Dex down, which came as shock to all of us in the department because we didn't know Dex was that ill. Dex was a five-year veteran of the Westmont Police Department, who served as a K-9 unit with his partner, Officer Tom Kozelski. Dex was instrumental in helping us in several drug investigations, as well as protecting his partner, and in fact, all the officers on the shift while Dex was working. After Dex's retirement, he remained valued and a family member of the Kozelski family. And so, we are keeping Tom in our thoughts at this time. Along those lines, the Westmont Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association will be accepting donations from the public, as well as they're going to make a donation to the Illinois Vest a Dog in Palos Heights. It's an organization that donates free of charge bullet resistance and vests to police departments for canines. And so, if anyone is interested, they can send a donation made out to Illinois Vest a Dog, V-E-S-T-A-D-O-G. And if you send it to the Westmont Citizens Police Academy at 500 North Cass, the donations they receive from the general public, they will combine with their donation and send one in honor of Dex.
And chief, he was quite the community volunteer as well. I remember he came to our Lions Club meeting and put on a wonderful demonstration of all of his skills and how he carried out his duties as our K-9.
He did. One thing I learned, never get between him and the tennis ball. His tennis ball was a reward.
Oh, yeah, there was a tennis ball.
So, I learned one thing very quickly in my career with the K-9s, stay away from the tennis ball.
It's Doug.
Also, if I could take a moment, we'll be announcing, we are going to be... I am going to be having four community meetings throughout the village starting next week. It's a community event called Coffee with the Police Chief, myself. And the events will take place, starting with the Westmont Park District at 75 East Richmond on Tuesday, September 27th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00. We will have one at Maze Lake Village at 1801 Was 35th Street in the Community Room on September 30th from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Third will be at Westmont Yard down on 63rd Street on October 1st from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. And then again, the last one will be at the Westmont Police Department at 500 North Cass on Monday, October 3rd from 7:00 to 8:30. It's a community meeting called Coffee with the Chief. It gives our residents and the department a chance to learn about their concerns about activity in their area. We believe that meeting in an informal and friendly setting will allow us to discuss issues in our community while learning how we can better serve you, our citizens. These meetings also give our citizens an opportunity to sit down and meet their police officers in an informal and friendly setting to keep our lines of communications open. So, we wish that any of the residents who are interested, there's four meetings, please pick the one that's closest. You can come to all four if you so choose, or you can come to one, whichever is closest to your house. The police department is also in the process of finalizing a survey, two surveys. One will be a business survey, which will be enlisting the help from the Chamber of Commerce to get down to our Westmont businesses, and a survey to our residents that they can take online, again, asking for information, the concerns that they have in the area. Both will be up and running probably by the end of this week, and we'll have press releases and also information on Channel 6 announcing how to access that. Those will be internet-based, and we also ask that our residents take an opportunity to that as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, trustee... Are you finished, Ron?
I am. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee item. Start with trustee Scott.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank Chief Trout for the 9/11 ceremony as well. To hear the... I'd like to thank you for the 9/11 ceremony, sir. Again, as the mayor said, listening to that gentleman who came from the 61st floor in his trials, getting down there, and what he was going through his mind, it was just... You're almost able to put yourself there, and what would you do in that situation? So, it was very moving, and thank you. And I'd just like to send a speedy recovery to Roger Westman, who's in his annual vacation in the hospital again, who had surgery. So, I hope he could get well and gets out quick. He's at Heinz.
Which one of the nine lives is he on now?
Twelve.
Thirteen.
He's on twelve. Thirteen, no. Very good. Thank you. Trustee Seneca?
Thank you. I too just wanted to comment on how nice the commemorative ceremony was on 9/11. The best attended. I think we had 300 to 400 people there, standing room only. Service organizations participated. It was just very, very well done, and thank you to Chief Trout and to Chief Mulhern and all of our day-to-day responders, because I'll tell you, hearing that gentleman talk, you appreciate them all over again and what they do every day for us. And then I also wanted to congratulate Robert Plowman and his theater group here in Westmont, the Progressive Village Performance Network. They put on several performances over 9/11 of a two-person play called The Guys, and it had to do with 9/11. It was basically a journalist helping a fire captain write obituaries for his group that he lost. And it was just extremely well done. It was just phenomenal. The professionalism of that group is wonderful. So, we're very lucky to have them here in Westmont partnering with our Park District, and I urge everyone to watch for future performances by this group, because they do quite a bit, and they will be doing more as the winter comes about. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Trustee Emory?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Nero?
Just to reiterate, the September 11th ceremony, I thought was very powerful. I thought it was very well done. It was very informative. The story was amazing. I couldn't imagine doing something like he had to go through, but I again want to thank everybody that was involved, both chiefs. It was great to get that guy here. It was fantastic, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business, temporary moratorium extension. Or to consider an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on development in the area commonly known as Northeast Acres.
Thank you. This is an item that's on the agenda. The moratorium that went into place for one year expires tomorrow. It originally went into place on September 20th of last year in response to some of the issues that had come up during our village-wide comprehensive drainage study. At that time, the restriction was put in place that any development in the portion of the community known as Northeast Acres, which is generally northeast of Cass and Naperville Road, would be restricted to a lot coverage of 30%. And I have a map of the moratorium area here, which is also in your packets. Hopefully, that'll come on in just a second. Staff is here before you this evening to state for the record that no conditions have changed. We recommend that the moratorium be extended while we continue to investigate opportunities to be able to provide additional detention in the area, grant opportunities and other things to try to remedy the flooding issues in this portion of the village.
Have we had any requests in that area?
We actually just next month, I believe, will have our first request for variance in that area. We have had calls and inquiries for projects, and we've reiterated what the requirements are. Many of the lots in this portion of Westmont are 300 feet deep, so they have a little bit more room to work with. And sometimes redevelopment or additions can be accomplished because they have a general larger lot area. But in 12 months' time, we haven't had anyone request an exception from the moratorium, and we will be seeing that within the next couple of weeks.
I'd like to see us continue it for another year and then revisit it.
Yep.
And development is allowed under certain circumstances, kind of as you touched on. So, it's not an...
Yeah, if they want to come in and explain the exception they want, that's fine, but I think we clearly need to extend it.
Any other comments? Thank you. We have a motion.
So, move, Emory.
I confirm.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory? Yes, do we need to put in a... Is it for another year, or is it indefinitely?
12 months is what's in the ordinance unless you direct otherwise.
Well, that's fine. Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Next item, 101 North Lincoln, zoning code variance request. Or to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request to allow a covered front porch for the non-conforming front yard setback.
I believe Mr. and Mrs. Mushon are here this evening. Do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
All right. I'm Jim Mushon, and my wife Jane over here. I think she was at the previous board meeting. I was out of the country, and Shannon's been a big help for us.
Oh, just to summarize the request that's before you this evening, and thank you. The Mushons wish to add a gabled roof overhang to cover their front porch to provide some protection from the elements and a little bit of curb appeal. The home has a non-conforming front yard setback. This, the gabled overhang would match that and be 24.4 feet to the front yard, front set, front lot line, excuse me.
Yeah, I don't think this is much different than several others. We've already approved in that scenario, so I don't have a problem with it.
No, and I think it's going to look nice.
There are several up and down in that area, if you know it. They're neighbors of mine.
This is an easy one.
No issues?
Any other questions?
No.
There'll be a big improvement to the physical appearance of the house from the street. It'll look very, very nice. Thank you.
Just the Girl Scouts won't get wet.
There you go.
Motion to approve, Emory?
Second, Seneca?
Roll call. Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
644 Champlain Avenue, zoning code variance request. Or to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request to allow a driveway wider than 22 feet permitted by Village Code.
Hello? My name is Michael Cortina. This is my wife Laura over here. Thanks to the board for hearing our request. Can I explain this to you?
You're welcome to, but I'm happy to do so if you'd like. The Cortinas are seeking a variance for their driveway width. The code requirement, or the code maximum width for driveway is 22 feet, including any pavers or anything else attached to the sides. Due to some necessity in terms of mobility for the residents and because they have some teenage and college-age students, they're seeking a variance to allow 25-foot wide driveway. Total lot covered would be approximately 36%, which falls in that window that we'll be discussing a little bit later tonight, but where we're going to talk about administratively waiving the 36% to 40% under certain circumstances. This would be an example of where we could work with that, because there aren't any known flooding issues in that particular area.
Was there any comments from any of the neighbors?
We haven't heard any call... We haven't received any calls or letters or anything that indicated there was not... that there was an issue either for or against. Have you reached out to them directly?
No. Well, we've done extensive remodeling on the house due to some health issues. We had to put in a first-floor master, and we've already cooperated with the neighbors because some of the work we haven't done, we're going to have to re-sod and things like that. But more on friendly terms, all the neighbors, no problems as far as we know.
Wouldn't you say in your variance request that there's three cars being juggled, and then there's going to soon be four, and then five vehicles parking there?
Two are away at college right now, and when they come back, all of them due to college loans or what have you, will be living at home for a while.
Okay.
So, once, when we have a year, another year, we'll soon have five drivers. Now, already, the three of us where we drive, there's no public transportation alternative.
No, I understand that. But you're going to have five cars in the driveway? So, is it going to be three-car wide? Well, two will be in the garage, right?
Well, two in the garage, two in the garage, and then potentially, again, we don't know. By the time my last one gets home from college, my oldest might be moved out by then. I don't know. But there's already a physical hardship and a family with a health issue with my wife, and it's hard to juggle all the cars with that many people working, you know, when everybody's home in the morning.
No, I understand that, but is your plan to go three-wide in the driveway? Three cars wide?
Well, we wanted to be able to accommodate that if we have to. There's that, that's the whole idea. Like, right now, we've got two in the garage, and we often have to juggle the car in the morning, which, as you know, may be difficult. So, we're just asking, I think the code's 22, we're just asking to go 25. And there may be some instances where there are three cars in the drive down the road. I don't know.
So, you're just sort of doing this proactively?
Exactly, because we're doing all the remodeling now. We just spent six figures remodeling the house, redoing the whole house, society now the zoning board all went by the house and saw it. We've done a lot of work beautifying the house as well as adding the first floor. I don't know if any of you drove by it, you know, we're not done with the work yet. But seeing we're doing that, the driveway need to be redone anyway. The asphalt was old, I think it was almost 20 years old, hon?
Oh, please.
The asphalt, so we need to redo the driveway, even if you didn't allow us this variance. But seeing we have to redo it anyway, we asked for the variance.
Well, the only reason that I'm asking is that if you're intending to go three cars wide in the driveway and your neighbors don't know that right now...
They know exactly what's going on. They've seen the sign in front of the house, they've seen the port, we've talked to them, they all know exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
And they received the notice within close proximity?
That's what we just want to make sure. We just want to approve this, and then all of a sudden, somebody says, we didn't know anything about it.
No, the sign's been out there, and we've talked to them all.
That's good.
The construction in the house has been going on three, four months, you know, all summer. We've seen all our neighbors out in front, they all know what we're doing.
Just trying to protect everybody.
Got you.
Any other questions?
No.
We have a motion.
I do actually have a question. I got to ask. I'm looking at the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
Where you're going to remove the partial concrete patio, proposed addition, and then there's a... Down in the lower left, there's another... Is that existing concrete patio, E-X period C-O-N-C? Is that existing concrete patio?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull the... Yeah, I'm trying to pull the plan here.
It's right after the legal notice.
Here, I'll put this on the...
Okay.
Okay. And then you show the driveway total of 25 feet across. What's the total lot coverage going to be at the end of the day?
I can give you that figure. It is about 36 percent.
35.6, I think it says here.
So less than a point over what you guys are looking for.
Oh, okay, it's over on the corner, 35.6.
Yeah, it's hard to read, it's barely...
Okay. All right.
That was my question.
Any other questions?
No.
So how can we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Thank you for coming in this evening. Next item, 276 East Ogden, zoning code variance request. Order to consider an ordinance approving requests for the following zoning code variances on behalf of Auto Nation slash Audi. A, variance to increase the number of allowable signs, and B, variance to increase the maximum gross square footage of the signage.
Good evening. We're here tonight, this is on the Audi dealership. We would like to replace the existing sign that's out in front, the tall sign, with a newer sign that goes with the new building we have. The requests are a little, if you read through there, it says we have six signs, and if you look on the, on the side of the building where it says Audi Westmont with the four circles, that's actually, this is actually considered three signs. So six, I think, is a little misleading, although that's correct. The other is that we've got 91.8 feet of frontage on this property. And if you look at the property, the 91.8 is actually the frontage of the building here. If you remember, Emmys used to be on the corner, which had all sorts of signage. We removed that, bought that, removed that. That's all parking and landscaping now. If you take the actual building behind there, that's about 200 more feet. So we feel that if you were to take that, the extra 200 feet that basically is fronts on, onto Ogden, you'd come up with, rather than the permit being 183.6 feet, it'd be 583. And we're, again, we're only at 300 feet total here. And if you take the ground sign, the new ground sign we're proposing, again, if you were to take the entire frontage, the 91 feet and the 200 feet, the allowable for a ground sign would be 200, almost 292 feet. And again, we're at 128. So that's where I think it's a little unique here, only because we've removed a building that had all sorts of signage, we put all landscaping in the front, and we feel we should get a little consideration for the, for the back of the property. We have that building there that has no signs on it currently. So the new sign is very similar to the sign that's up there now. This would be, this would be replacing that existing sign that's between the Audi and the Mercedes. One thing we've done, and maybe we did it too well, when we consolidated the Mercedes and cleaned it up and made it look nice, and the Audi right next door, some of the, our customers are saying as they're driving by, they can't quite figure out where to turn in for Audi, and they kind of go past. So we're trying to get a sign there right at the entranceway, and that's what this is. The other thing is, even though this is a large sign, if you look, it's just, we've got just the Audi up on top with the address on there. This isn't a sign that has lights and bells and whistles and that type of thing. So even though our, our sign is 100, it's 126 feet, the actual wording on there comes out to about 36 square feet. It's, the whole sign's not lit up, just the Audi portion, the logo, and that's lit up at the top. It's very similar to the Mercedes, to the BMWs that we've done along there. And again, it's a new, clean sign upgraded to Audi's new requirements.
Questions, board members?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
I would just like to say that the, all the new cars at Audi, the new models that Audi has come out with, has contributed to their tremendous success here in the Village of Westmont. Whatever we can do to it, continue to expand your car sales, we'd like to try to do it if we can.
We very much appreciate working with you and your staff.
Sales tax revenue is wonderful. Thank you.
Are we doing both?
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Mm-hmm. Two different ones, right?
Okay, on point A.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Any more questions, comments on item A? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Motion on point B.
So moved, Seneca.
Second, Emory.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, 4 East Ogden, preliminary plat of subdivision request. Order to consider an ordinance approving a request from Super Value with Jetco Properties Jewel Express to split one lot into two.
Good evening. My name is Van Busman. I'm with the Civil Engineering Land Surveying Landscape Architecture Firm of Webster McGrath and Alberg. And I'm here on behalf of Super Value and Jewel Osco. It's a simple request. The Jewel and the Jewel Express are currently on one parcel, and we'd like to split the Jewel Express from the Jewel Osco lot so that they're on two separate lots. That's essentially all we're asking for.
Is that to close down the Jewel Express for future sale, potential sale?
It was announced in the paper last week that the Jewel Expresses have been sold. I'm not sure who the buyer is. They haven't told me. Don't know. So we're doing multiple locations in the Chicago area.
Any other questions from board members?
Size will meet the requirement.
Pardon?
The smaller lot meets the requirement, so it should be fine.
Have a motion?
So moved, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Next item, Village Westmont text amendment. Order to consider an ordinance approving a text amendment to allow an administrative waiver of lot coverage variances under certain circumstances.
Okay. Couple months ago, I believe now, we discussed at the board level, or committee level, excuse me, the idea of allowing staff to pursue a text amendment to allow a bit of administrative flexibility in reviewing lot coverage issues. As we talked about earlier this evening, the lot coverage requirements have, over the last year or so, become a bit more restrictive. This is specifically applying to the change from 40 percent in single-family districts to 35 percent in single-family districts. And the, the administrative flexibility that's sought is to allow staff, when lot coverage for permit requests totals somewhere between the neighborhood of 35 percent and 40 percent, that under certain circumstances, we could, at the staff level, waive the formal variance filing, similar to what we do when parking is needed and it's three or fewer spaces downtown, for example. So the language that is proposed states that when the application for lot coverage regulations specified herein results in proposed lot coverage between 35 and 40 percent, a permit may be eligible for administrative approval, provided that the property is not identified with any building, moratorium area, known drainage problem area, or within any identifiable drainage sub-basin area. So we'd work very closely with our engineering staff to determine whether the property that a permit is sought for is in a problem area, whether this could be administratively waived. If it was a problem area, they'd still have to go through the normal filing process for variance. They may have to do some additional type of engineering work to help mitigate that. And this really kind of came up because we were having a lot of requests for permit work for kind of run-of-the-mill things like sheds or minor alterations, where we had created a lot of nonconformities with the lot coverage change last November.
Questions, board members?
I think it's acceptable.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion about this at the committee level, and I think just the formality of doing it.
Idea.
Yep. As long as it doesn't hit 41.
That's right. We'll be here together talking about it then.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
There's no further questions, a motion?
So moved, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Next item, declaration of village property as surplus.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the, the actual items that are being declared surplus are four vehicles in our possession. The, both the declaring of surplus and the method of disposition is asked for us so that we can take these vehicles to the DuPage Mayors and Managers Auction. That will be held this October. There's four vehicles on the inventory there. Two of them were obtained through confiscation, and the, the second two vehicles are our own fleet that has been, has been taken out of service. Actually, they were replaced with newer continued-use squad cars, and then these are the oldest two in the fleet that are to go.
And at the spring auction, we had a very good result, if I remember, from participating in the auction.
We had a very good result. I can't remember the dollar amount, but it was a, a good amount better than we were expecting, when we originally estimated it.
Good.
We found much more success, particularly with these types of vehicles and regular vehicles and village equipment, that there's a lot of people that come to the Mayors and Managers Auction for those things. So we, we tried the eBay route for a while, and we've been finding better success with the Mayors and Managers.
Where do they hold that?
This is going to be at the...
It rotates.
Woodridge Cypress Grove, 8301 South James Avenue, but they do move it around sometimes for years. They used to have it over at College of DuPage, but I think it, it moves now, probably depending on the number of vehicles they have and where they can find space to do it.
Yeah, it's been, you know, a different place each time. It was Illinois Benedictine, it's been at the county fairgrounds. So I think they try and just move it around the county.
And I do remember that one of the conference employees commented last time that the, one of the reasons they thought we did so well was our, our fleet staff does such a great job in preparation.
Really?
In particular, I think Phil was mentioned as some...
Yeah, and Phil goes to the auction essentially on his own time and sits there and makes sure all, everybody, questions are asked, that they know everything that we know, you know, that's wrong with them.
Off the vehicle?
Yeah.
Great.
Further questions? Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Next item, data management, online subscriptions agreement. Order to consider an ordinance approving an agreement with Backflow Solutions Incorporated perform certain notification and data management functions on behalf of the village.
Sorry, I didn't notice that that was mine, too. We actually had already discussed the site in a public worth committee meeting. It is a management service that interfaces with the, all of the, by our own code and by the Illinois Plumbing Code, certain size services, which are essentially all the commercial-sized services, have to have a backflow prevention device between the, the public water system and their building. So they have to be inspected annually, and there's a reporting requirement. So this organization will do all the administration. We pay an annual subscription fee to them, and then they pay a data entry fee. Each, each test that's done, that user will pay the $11.95, of which $2 of that comes back to the village. So it more than offsets our cost, our annual cost, and it takes all the workload off of, not all of it, I'll say, 80 percent of the workload off of administering this requirement. But it is an agreement, so it requires your attention.
Sounds good.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Emory.
Roll call.
Trustee, trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Whistleblower Act Code Amendment. Order to consider an ordinance adopting the Illinois Whistleblower Act, Illinois False Claims Act, parentheses, Illinois Whistleblower Reward and Protection Act, and a whistleblower reporting policy.
We, we talked about this at the September 6th Administration Finance Committee meeting in an effort to continue to look for ways that will encourage and empower employees to feel comfortable if they think anything is going on inappropriate in the organization. We suggested that we adopt the Illinois Whistleblower Act by ordinance, as well as the Illinois False Claims Act. And also in your packet is a, a policy that we put together for our employees in terms of how they can report any concerns that they have. Again, this is something we talked about at the September 6th Administration Finance Committee meeting.
I mean, everybody's certainly governed by it because it's state law, but we're just, we're just sort of ratifying it for purposes of letting our employees know that they have protections.
Right, and putting a policy in place that we can communicate to our employees as to, here's how you report it.
Any other questions? You have a motion?
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Spray, spray paint graffiti ordinance. Order to discuss preparation of an ordinance that would restrict the retail display and sale of spray paint, as well as provide authority for quicker removal of graffiti.
What you have in front of you is a packet for myself, including a packet of the sample ordinance on graffiti. This was brought up by trustee Emory on the issue of being able to control the sale and/or shoplifting of graffiti in businesses in Westmont. At some point, you have the sample ordinance and those information from the police department as well. The options are of locking up the spray paint, putting it in a visible place in a business, requiring an ID, requiring sale only be to someone over the age of 18, and then signage put up that it's against the law to sell under the age of 18. It's all outlined in the sample ordinance. Of concern would be is that the effect of the local businesses. One effect that we talked about this morning was that it is a deterrent to stop someone from going in and either shoplifting or stealing the paint, but then could they easily go into a neighboring community without these restrictions and get it and come back? Thus, the sale leaving Westmont going to another business. However, we feel that the deterrent is high enough that if someone, if it's a crime of opportunity and I can go and either shoplift or steal the paint, go out and do it, I'm not going to go to the other town. By the time I go to the other town and come back, I may not actually commit that act. So we feel it is a deterrent, and it's a valid deterrent as well.
And for the people that don't have driver's licenses yet, it is some deterrent?
Yes.
I think you and Mr. Zemanek did a wonderful job coming up with the draft ordinance.
I have to give credit, it was Jan Zemanek and Emory LaFarell Perez who actually drafted the ordinance with our guidance and checking with our staff, but they did the lion's share of the work.
It is very comprehensive. It is very comprehensive, and even though Illinois has a parental responsibility act for the acts of genius children on their parents, the compensation restitution parental responsibility for graffiti is also part of the draft ordinance, which is good. The recommendation of a fine of not less than 25, no more than 750. Did you pick 750 because that's what our other ordinance offenses are?
That's the maximum by ordinance we're allowed to charge, or the judge can assess.
Chief, would you explain a little bit for the people who are at home about what you have also added as something you'd like to see as part of this is regarding the removal of graffiti?
It's imperative that the graffiti be removed as soon as possible. If not, the very next day. I would prefer it to be done the very next day. I had an instance where my house was tagged, and I was out there. Granted, I had it on a Sunday. I was able to get it down that day. However, we want it down the next day. We also have to be concerned of the residence-to-business owner's ability to do so. One town, West Chicago in particular, has a program which I think we could like to explore, is that the village would remove the graffiti, whether it be on a public building or on a private property, at the cost of the village, no cost of the property, the business owner. We don't have funds budgeted for that right now, so that would not be a possibility. Maybe something we consider for next year. The other option would be is that if the homeowner cannot remove the graffiti in a timely manner, or maybe an elderly citizen that is unable to remove the graffiti, then the village could come and do so with their permission, and the village would bill them for the removal of that damage. Again, our goal here is to get it off, down as soon as possible, preferably within the next couple of days.
And obviously, if they say, you know, the homeowner's insurance claims rep can't get out for, you know, till next Tuesday, you guys will hold off till you can, you know, work with them in that regard?
We currently, right now, as soon as we know something graffiti is observed, we contact the owner through code enforcement as well. We give them a certain time period. I believe it's within 30 days within which to have it removed. And there's no option right now for us to be able to have the village go in and do that. And our goal, again, is to get the graffiti down. Another option here, too, as we talked about today, was what if the homeowner's away on vacation? Or, again, it's an elderly person or someone who just won't be back till the end of the week. If, you know, we go in and start not so much fining them, but we'd like to try to find some type of acceptable medium in there. The ordinance you see in front of you is 14 days. Emory drafted that based on, that's what our current policy allows. However, I'd like to see something shorter. I mean, five days. You're giving your resident only five days. Okay, it happens on Monday. I plan on taking it down on the weekend because that's the only time I have available. He would not be able to do so.
I think we know from experience that when we see a tag on a building or on, certainly on public property or something, it's, looking at it for two weeks would be horrendous. So I, for one, don't have a problem backing it up to five days. I mean, there's always exceptions to every rule if we have to, but 14 days would just be, like, not good. There'd be a lot, a lot, a lot of people that don't live around here that might think that that's something that's accepted by this town to stay up.
We had some concerns about the 14 days also. And not only that, but then the, if after 14 days the owner doesn't remove it, then there's a period of time where we send out a notice saying, you haven't removed it in 14 days as required by ordinance. You have 30 days. This is your 30-day notice to remove it. And then if you don't remove it, the village can come in and actually remove it.
Right, but then it'll be worn off.
And I guess this was drafted with an eye towards caution and protection of a homeowner if they are out of town, et cetera. But perhaps a tighter time period on both sides would be warranted.
Now, what's the, when this was first brought up, I explained that, you know, in Downers, like Joann Fabrics has theirs, their spray paint locked up and that type of thing to prevent shoplifting of it. We have hardware stores, we've got Hobby Lobby, but we also have several paint stores. I, for one, am not in favor of moving the spray paint to where you have to get a clerk and take them back there. It takes them off the floor. I'd like it out there, and it's, you know, relatively simple and inexpensive to build containment that they can't get in. But have you had the opportunity to talk to or have you heard from any of the paint stores that are in various locations?
We went to the paint stores today to identify all the paint stores in town that would. We didn't have a chance to go in and speak to them.
Okay.
Again, you'll see in my memo, too, I'm not going to recommend making an ordinance tonight. I thought tonight was just to bring this to your attention, get us some ideas, get direction where you would like us to go with this, what further information you'd like to see us obtain. That would be one of them. I'd like to think either we survey or somehow talk to the business owners. How will this affect them? Maybe they might have a way to be able to help us draft something into our ordinance as well.
What I thought was interesting is I was at Two Home Depots, and they have a pretty big selection of spray paint. And it is commonplace and accepted now to test out the spray paint by painting the floor with it. I was appalled. It's like, it is the biggest mess in the, you can spot the spray paint now because people just go, oh, I don't like that color next. Yeah, that's how accepted it is to paint property.
Never, well, not only that, but I wouldn't want to be buying that can because I'm not getting 100% of the product.
No, it's crazy.
As far as locking up or otherwise separating spray paint from the remainder of paint, the way this draft ordinance, it says that the paint has to be directly observable at all times by an employee, or it has to be under surveillance. If they can't accommodate that, then it has to be placed into an area that's not readily accessible by the public, which is either locked up or maybe in a back room, or they'd have to leave the premises and go back there. I don't know if you like those options or not, but that's what's there for your
I like that option because what happens is if the guy's going to go out and tag some house or a garage or something like that, he's going to steal the paint.
Yeah.
If he can't buy it because, you know, if it's going to be because he's not of age, he'll shoplift it.
Which he still may, well, still may be able to do if it's on a display near the clerk, where the clerk can say, hey, I can see it, but the clerk's so busy helping people online, they're not looking at it.
No, it's got to be locked up. It's got to be locked up one way or another. It can't just be out there where some, somebody can see it if they're looking at it. That's how they all are now. So
What's Downers do? Do they have this ordinance in effect?
I don't think so. I was just at the Ace Hardware on 63rd and Main Street. They don't lock it up. And what I'm, it's going to be tough to lock up because there's, it's a big space. I mean, there's a lot of different spray cans. I would maybe talk to the business owners because that might be expensive for them to make a huge
Yeah, I mean, it's not like the cold medications where there's just a handful of them.
You know, I mean, I've never bought one. I have no idea what it costs, but I'm sure it's not going to be too cheap to
You'd have to put like a cage. Each time someone wants you to go find an employee to go and unlock that cage, get the person. I believe Downers, on checking with the chief porter, they have, I believe, their ordinances on the age, not so much on the security of the item.
Well, you know, regardless of if it's a bit of a problem, I mean, the drugstores have to lock up everything you can use to make meth.
Right.
And that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, you know, okay, you got a big display. I think hardware stores might have the capability to build something.
Well, maybe you can talk to the owners of the paint stores and the hardware store.
Well, and like, you said Hobby Lobby and
We will, you, in your packet, you see, we've identified, there's one paint store that was left off, Benjamin Moore, I believe, down near Home Economist on South Cass Avenue was left off the list. However, again, we were seeking the board's direction as to how you wish to proceed and what information you would like. We will definitely survey and speak to the business owners and come back to you with their results.
My only question is, John, should the, the part about that applies to vendors of spray paint be in a separate ordinance from the removal section because they deal with very different, should they be two separate ordinances?
Probably. Because one's graffiti, which is already in our ordinance under offenses.
Mm-hmm.
The reason it was put in there, I can, I know we're thinking, was it is a crime to, oh, you're talking about the spray paint. Yeah, you know, you could be
Because then the part that requires homeowners to remove it, or we can slap a lien on them or something like that, is different. It's like our grass-cutting stuff.
Right.
So that's why I'm wondering whether you just, you know, put those in different sections.
I guess is what I was getting at. It's unlawful to possess spray paint if you're a minor, subject to certain exceptions. And because it had that kind of criminal or quasi-criminal component to it, I think that's why it was coupled in there. But again, with your direction, we can break that out, have it as a standalone section in some chapter of the code. If you don't want it in the offenses, criminal offenses section, I'll find an appropriate chapter, I guess.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would be good. It's easier to find if some
And then maybe we can do a cross-reference in the offenses chapter.
It's actually, in the research we did, it was done that way in other communities. So we can look at the chapters they used and correlate them.
Okay, thank you.
And is the direction from the board with the spray paint locking it up as opposed to having it under surveillance? Let's say you have the overhead video camera or directly observable?
I think it should be locked up.
Everyone agrees that it should be locked up?
I do, too. I mean, kid in a black hoodie, it's pretty generic when you see it on a surveillance. Locked up.
I'd like to see what the business owners have to say.
Right, I would like to see what the owners have to say, too.
The only thing that you're dealing with there is the fact that right now, many of these stores and that have reduced their workforce to there might be one person in the store at any given time, or maybe two. So that could be problematic for them to watch a particular area all the time.
Who might be 17-years-old working in there?
Right.
Someone on the side. Sorry, I didn't mean to
No, locked up. I mean, it's not like they have to have their whole inventory on the shelf. They can put one can of each kind behind the glass.
Well, if it's a franchise store with other stores in metropolitan Chicago, this isn't the first time they've heard about it.
No, and whether, if they have one person and that, then you know what? The customer waits.
Okay, you've got your direction on that one.
Yes, sir.
Next one, next item.
Do we have to vote to postpone that or anything?
We don't have to vote. Just discuss preparation of an ordinance.
Just goes to old business?
So would we put this on the next agenda then, 29th, with an actual ordinance for adoption?
Is that okay?
Okay.
Next, curfew hours ordinance. Board to discuss preparation of an ordinance that would change minor curfew hours.
Again, in the same packet, you'll have staff's research on curfew. In there, you'll see curfew times and ages from approximately, I believe it was 41 different other communities. We're still receiving responses. We sent out response. We're still receiving additional responses. Of issue here is what, a survey of what other towns are doing. For Sunday through Thursday, the most popular was, is what our current ordinances is 11 o'clock. 30 towns had that. Four towns had 10:30 p.m., six towns had 10 o'clock, and one town had 9:30. And on the weekends, Friday and Saturday, six towns had 11 p.m., which is where we're currently at. Three towns had 11:30, and 32 towns had midnight. Again, correction, which is where we're currently at. This afternoon, I took a poll of our officers to see if they felt that reducing the times or cutting the times back, that you can be out in a public area, as well as increasing the age to 17 years of age, just banning them from being out in a public place. And out of 17 officers, 10 officers felt it would make a difference. Seven officers felt that it may not make a difference. Some of their comments, and one which I think is very, very valid, is that with the graduated license by the Illinois Secretary of State, someone with this age group cannot be out driving past 10 o'clock at night. So if they cannot be out past 10 o'clock driving, you know, then how should they be out walking? And officers would like to see our times mirror that of the state at 10 o'clock. With that information, in there, you'll see the towns, some towns break it down by ages.
I like that idea.
As Chicago does. As example, Chicago is in your survey. Chicago, is it if you're 13 to 16, you have to be in by 10 o'clock? If you're 12 and under, you have to be in by 8:30 or 8:30 at night. We just went, we're just recommending, staff's recommendation is that the age be increased to 17. So anyone 17 and younger has to be in. And then the staff is recommending with, you know, the board's approval, either 10:30 or 10 o'clock, whichever the board feels comfortable with, or the board wishes to leave it at the same times it is now.
I'd like to see it back down to 10 on weekdays, 11 on Friday and Saturday. We don't have a problem in our neighborhood with the kids who can drive. We have a problem with the kids who can't drive.
It's the 13-year-olds, the 14-year-olds, the 12-year-olds that are
And the officers today, when I spoke to them at roll call, was that, you know, the seven that said it probably wouldn't help is because it's the prevailing attitude of the kids, that we call them the frequent flyers. They're going to offend, and they're going to reoffend, and they're going to keep on offending. The ordinances really don't mean much to them, which is an excellent point I'd like the board to consider. And I spoke to John before the meeting today. We'd like to research, as we did with the spray painting, that we have a parental responsibility clause or parental responsibility section here as well. Chicago's also doing the same thing, so that, you know, we start getting the parents involved. So if we do have the repeat offenders, there's also another step that we can take involving the parents and make sure the problem stops.
Well, they also had, if I remember right, a three-strike clause with that.
Pardon me?
They also had what they called a three-strike clause.
Yes.
That they, fine, actually, by the time you get to the third one's like $1,500.
Correct. It's $500 for the first two. By the time you get to the third one, it's $1,500. And again, also, our fines is set by the judge. I mean, our prosecutor can make recommendations to the judge for the fine. Usually, when the village prosecutor starts to see the same kids coming up again and again and again, she also increases the fine incrementally as well. However, by ordinance, the judge, the maximum he can fine is $750. Keep in mind, there can be no jail time for a village ordinance violation, with the exception of is if someone does not pay their fine and they're 17 or older, they can be issued a warrant. And then, you know, if they don't have the fines to pay the bond, they could go to jail. Our officers also have the discretion of also choosing to, what's called, direct file, if it's a juvenile, with the juvenile officer and send them into juvenile court for curfew as well.
Did you look at the other towns? The two things that concern me as far as defenses to a charge under the, our current code are the minors accompanied by the child's parent, legal guardian, or a sibling who is at least 21 years of age, or the minors accompanied by a person who is at least 21 years of age and known and approved by the minor's parent or legal guardian. The problem that we're having with some of the gang or non-gang activity is we get some, one guy that's 21, and all the punks that are with him now have a defense to being out after curfew. So can we get rid of that they just happen to be with somebody who's over 21? That they, they're either with a parent or a legal guardian, and that's it?
Story.
Or work, or, you know.
Well, yeah, all the other ones.
All the other ones.
But I'm saying that the two, the defenses, one and two, because three has got three A, B, C, D, and all that, but one and two are sibling who's at least 21, or a person who's at least 21 and known and approved by the parents. So naturally, you know, if you have a troubled teen, you don't want to pay a fine for curfew. You're going to say, I approved of, you know, the people he was with. So I'd like to get rid of that.
I'm checking to see if that was taken from state statute, and I don't see it, but we can look in that.
Agree. And I do have a problem with a 12-year-old out, just roaming the streets till 10 o'clock at night. I can't think of any good reason for them to be out there.
No, I think, I like the, I like the graduated times back down to 8:30.
Absolutely.
Because we, you know, I mean, trustee Seneca and I are in an area that is having a lot of criminal activity. The cars are all getting targeted. I've had discussions with the chief, and it was between the night before last, 11 o'clock
at night. I can't think of any good reason for them to be out there.
No, I think, I like the, I like the graduated times back down to 8:30.
Absolutely.
Because we, you know, I mean, trustee Seneca and I are in an area that is having a lot of criminal activity. The cars are all getting targeted. I've had discussions with the chief, and it was between the night before last, 11 o'clock, I and the dogs went out, 6 a.m., I and the dogs went out, and at 6 a.m., my neighbor's car, who unfortunately, he didn't lock, so everything that wasn't tied down was all over your berm.
I guess my question, direction you can give, what age would you like? Like, if Chicago currently is 12 and under, and if you're 13 to 16 or 13 to 7, it would be the 10 o'clock. You look at Aurora, Aurora's 15 and under, 10 o'clock. Their graduate scale is also, homework Glenn is 12 and under, Lamont is 12 and under, Joliet 15 and under, Shanahan 15 and under. I guess, what direction would you prefer the 12 and under?
I like Chicago.
12 and under, okay.
I like Chicago.
Toughest one.
12 and under, 8:30. You'd be home.
Yep. Lucky we don't do 14 and under.
You like all of the Chicago ranges?
I do.
And dates?
Yes.
Or ages and times, sorry?
Yeah, because then there's no...
I mean, a responsible parent.
I'm with a 15, I'm 11, but I'm with a 15-year-old.
You know, if my, if my 12-year-old is gonna be walking four houses down, you know, from the neighbor, they're doing homework, a responsible parent's either gonna go with them, or they're gonna call you and say, you know what, he's walking down, I gave him... I mean, yeah, they just don't need to be out later than 8:30 without a good reason.
I agree.
This is why God never gave me children.
Then I would assume that we would contact the schools?
Yes, you'll all...
So, they could either do some kind of a notification to help us, so the parents get word of this?
Yes, I believe they have like an electronic backpack, where we can send emails, we can send information, and they, no longer the days where we would ask them, could you please send us home with the kids? We send it electronically, if I believe, and electronically send it out, or in the kids. They know that each parent can check this electronic backpack for information.
Great.
Maybe we could put a sign next to the spray paint at the Aurora store, too.
Reminder.
Paint before 8:30.
We will also, too, is, again, when this is settled, the spray paint and the ordinances on the curfew, work with the schools, as well as, you know, public education through press releases, Channel 6 meetings such as this, and whatever information we can to get our voice out.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thanks for all their research.
We're not done yet, Sol.
Neither are we.
Neither are we.
Next item.
Oh, we have to vote on that, or do we?
No.
Not yet? Okay.
Be on next agenda.
Next agenda.
Yep.
Single-family residential rental licensing ordinance, where to discuss preparation of an ordinance. They would license all single-family residential rental units.
This was something we talked about when we went through the process of enacting the multifamily licensing program almost a couple of years ago now, when we started that discussion. We do have a high percentage of rental housing in the community, and I think, given some of the recent concerns that have been brought up at the board meeting, several trustees had asked staff to put this on the agenda for conceptual discussion at this point. We don't have an ordinance to present to you. We did put in your packet a sample ordinance from the community of Niles, and we've got a few other samples that we've collected as well. So, we're...
What I'd like to see is Mr. Heinz do an article in the progress, because I'm sure that this one is kind of flying below the radar, because we haven't heard from anybody, which is unheard of in a licensing ordinance type of situation.
Could we include the Bugle in that, too, now?
Yes, and the Bugle, which, by the way, isn't just Westmont, it covers others.
Yeah, had a lot of downers in it.
Yeah. But, the trend seems to be in many communities that when the multifamily licensing ordinance is effective and is going strong and is well-implemented, the gang bangers move out, which is the goal, and they...
I'm sorry to interrupt.
They start renting single-family houses.
Goals of the ordinance.
Well, it's one of the goals. We have, in the, in the ordinance, one of the things that the landlords have to have them sign is any gang activity about what it happens to their lease.
Right, that was the lease addendum.
Crime-free.
The crime-free lease addendum.
The crime-free lease addendum.
Which, while they were discussed at the same time, was kind of separate from the licensing, which is to ensure safe buildings that are code compliant.
Right. And if you, which, if you follow, when Vicky Senesek comes in, we hear all about the balconies that were gonna fall off before she got there, and she does all kinds of stuff on that. But with the, the crime-free lease addendum, it addressed a certain other element, and the other thing is, we are having a lot of problems with, we don't have enough staff to do code enforcement with all of the properties which are being allowed to fall into disrepair, and a lot of them, not all of them certainly, are rental properties. So, we have to step up to the plate with this, because we, you know, it's unacceptable to the people in single-family homes that are taking care of their property that other properties are allowed to completely deteriorate.
Just for public information, I guess, in terms of the census data, about 47% of our housing is rental, according to the 2010 census data. It's up a little bit over 2,000, but not great, but it's a large number to begin with.
And that's for single-family housing?
That's combination.
Combination. Do you know what the single-family is?
I don't, off the top of my head, I can try to...
What are the, what are the towns around here? What's their percentage? Do you know?
I anticipated you were gonna ask that question. I've been looking feverishly for my spreadsheet on that, and I can't find it.
And...
Put that in the next packet.
You know, and I'll bet, I'll bet that that number's even higher since that census was completed, just because there's so many homes that are underwater, and, you know, people are desperate to get out and just try to make the mortgage on it.
It's, hi. One of the things that, John, I would ask that you look into is, down in Carlton Court, where Sue and I are, in anticipation of the board down there going with no rentals, that it had to be owner-occupied, several, I shouldn't say several, a couple of the owners did a seller-financed sale, where they said that the, they had sold the property to the occupant sort of on a rental with the option to buy, for 30-year seller-financed, and we figured out with the price of the rental, $50 a month was going to the sale price, and they said that at the end of 30 years, the sale would be through, which meant they were selling it for $18,000 over the course of 30 years. All it was, was to get around being called a rental property. So, is there something we can put in our ordinance that title has to transfer if they want to say that they are not a rental property, that they've sold the property to the tenants?
Yes.
That title has to transfer?
Yes.
Okay.
Oftentimes called articles of agreement for deed, and you come up with some payment plan over time.
Yeah.
The seller holds the deed back when all the conditions are satisfied, or the payment's made, they, it gets recorded.
Yeah, because we're seeing the ones, there's no way there's ever gonna be a transfer.
I will admit, I haven't looked into this yet. I know there was a lot of work put into the multifamily licensing ordinance, a lot of public hearings, or at least public comment period. I do recall from that research that when those ordinances were first recognized by the courts, it's because there is substantial evidence presented to the public bodies that there's proliferation of multifamily apartments that are not being maintained, and they detailed all the types of code violations, and that became justification for those ordinances. I'll have to look what the scenario is like, whether it's similar for a single family, and whether we need some evidence presented by either building and zoning, or police, or someone else, or we can find some nationally-publicized reports that would justify such an ordinance.
Yeah, because it's, you know, I'm sure it's there because the difference, at least in this town, of properties that are allowed to deteriorate, when you look at them, probably 99 out of 100 are rental, if they're not foreclosed.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the residents have to understand why we're doing this. We're not doing this just to be bad guys and sit there and put more laws and restrictions on people. We're doing it because the residents are calling us and asking us to do something, because it's changing the face of neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And, and when you have that, and you've got people that are sitting there saying, either you guys do something, or I'm heading out of town, that's when the village has to start acting on it, and that's why we're doing it now.
Well, I was wondering, I know, I know there's a couple of people here this evening that kind of wanted to voice their opinion on something.
Yeah, and I was planning on recognizing them when we were finished with our discussion.
Fine.
And that, I don't think we're finished with our discussion.
I'm just making, I'm just making a suggestion, sir.
And I will open it up to the public.
Just making a suggestion.
I, I think it's interesting that you said there's not that many people here to speak. One, I see, probably has the best rental in Westmont. It's certainly the best-looking rental in Westmont I've ever seen.
The comment that I would like to make is that I'm in favor of looking into something like this, if it can be set up. But our staff presently is so overtaxed that they don't, they can't keep up with the multifamily ordinance inspections that took us a long time to put into place. So, I don't think it's something that's gonna happen overnight. And if it does happen soon, my feeling is that we have to come up with money to hire additional staff.
We'll have to look at that very closely.
Because there's no way that we can tax our present staff to do multifamily, which they can't keep up with, and then add single-family to their...
To the mix.
...evoad.
Especially when half of the households are rental properties.
Yeah, we're gonna...
That would make, what, 6,000 rental properties under the voting?
Yeah.
About four, almost five.
How many?
Wow.
So, about 5, 5,500 rental units.
Wow.
Hmm. Hmm. That's a lot of inspecting.
It's something that definitely needs to be done, and none of us have to look very far to see some pretty bad-looking houses that need, are in desperate need of help. Anything else from trustees before I open it up to anyone from the public that would care to make a comment?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. My name's Edward Wavec. I'm Bill Wavec's son. We own a property at 339 South Cass. Just a few items. I understand the need for something like this. Just in a matter of fairness, I think it's important to understand that just because the property is being rented, doesn't mean that owner that occupies it doesn't keep up their house as well. So, from a fairness point of view, you probably need to think about having an ordinance for every house, not just rental houses. So, if you're worried about disrepair of rental properties, that's somewhat different. The other thing, of course, is cost. I don't know, I'm sorry for the ignorance on my part of the multifamily licensing, but if you add additional costs to landlords for this, that could be onerous, as it is. This rental property is negative on a monthly basis, so we just can't get the rent in order to survive without, without the rental, it'd be in foreclosure kind of thing. So, the point is, is if there's any licensing fees, they can't be onerous on the rental landlord. So, that's pretty much it. You've answered the other questions that I've had, so.
Those are good points, and those are things that we'll talk about in depth as this process proceeds.
Could you inform me as to the licensing on the multifamily? Is there a cost to that?
There is a cost per unit.
Okay.
Fred can briefly cover that.
Cost of the multifamily.
Thank you very much.
Thirty dollars per year for each dwelling unit to the landlord, and they can either choose to build that into their rental structure or not.
Yeah. Thirty dollars a year.
But we will, you know, we'll have to discuss that.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Any further direction to staff as to where we want to go with this, and when, and how?
I say move forward. I'd like to be able to start talking about it by the next budget year, if not sooner, because, I mean, we can't do it without staff, but we need to get it in place.
I think staff shares the concern that the village board has here, and we think it was the intention all along when we adopted the original multifamily ordinance, to expand this into the single-family arena. One of the things that we're having difficulty with in talking with some of the other communities that have this, though, is how do you identify a single-family home that's rented? It's a little bit easier when you drive by an apartment house and you see six mailboxes, and you say, oh, there are six rental units there. But how do we know the house at 100 North Main Street? Is that a rental, or is it owner-occupied? Is there something that we might be able to work out? I don't know, perhaps with the clerk's office, when someone signs up for water service, they would check a box if it's owner-occupied, or something that would help us identify which these units are, because if we have to go around knocking on doors and saying, are you a rental, or are you an owner-occupied dwelling, you know, and then what if they fib to us, you know?
Well, sometimes the, the tax bills go to other than the address of the property.
Okay.
That's also a clue that...
At least want to pay their taxes.
Yeah.
So, whatever we can do to come up with a mechanism to identify these homes, I think we're open to suggestion, and we're continuing to try to talk with some of the other communities to say, how do you do that so that you can make that distinction?
Hmm.
But that, we think that's of very high importance to make this ordinance work and apply it equally to all.
Could I suggest that maybe we postpone this for a month, come back at that point and report on what we have in the way of legal research and...
Sure.
Very good. Anything else on this item?
Nope.
Moving right along. Finance ordinance number 10.
We have, of course, on this 19th day of September 2011, a finance ordinance in the amount of $1,094,329.70.
Motion to approve, Seneca. Second Emory.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Purchase orders.
Motion to approve is a block for $74,813.87.
Second Emory?
Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?